And.
It was so sad.
Man, he used to be his buddy. He's gonna have to turn on if he wants to keep up his.
You know.
The G T.
Well, the thing is, he can park him there.
My mom.
Look good, but he can park him there.
That's my, I know that, but he's in a, he's in a commercial district. But that's, you know, that's gonna be seen that way.
G T was something else.
I've liked it.
He told me he did.
Hello, Fred.
Hi, Chief.
How are you, my friend?
Am I continued to address you like that? You're, you're, you're chief of life.
I answer to everything.
That's the way he is. That's the way he's at my phone, Fred, chief.
They call me mom. Lots of stuff.
Some stuff he can't say in public right here.
That's right. Talk to my wife, she'll do this.
All right. Not starting yet, but let me know. Are you going live?
All right.
Oh, sure.
You're all right. You're good.
Okay.
Four minutes, three minutes.
Yeah, you get something called hair back there.
Oh, I did. I did want to say there.
All the way down to his shoulder.
I did. All the way down to my shoulders and sideburns down to here.
Yeah.
He came out of a hippie factory. I did come out of the hippie factory.
That whole clash, bud. You'll see some of your pictures.
Oh, yeah. He was hair delved. Man with hair delved to the waist.
Like mine was.
Big bushes.
If one guy could come through the door with his hair.
Yeah. Bell bottoms with bells.
Take him out of a bike.
Yeah.
The one boy who rode his motorcycle in the old light, with all that color for the chain, he was done.
A buddy, I rode through the hall of the school with no clothes on, in a motorcycle.
Own his motorcycle?
Yeah.
Let's not run, man. Let's ride.
Well, he was riding. But he, he went outside and stripped off, left his motorcycle in the woods. And then, I don't know, eleven o'clock or something, goes after the break and gets some, takes his clothes off, gets on his motorcycle. And everybody goes, everybody was, all the girls.
Yeah, Matthew almost didn't get to graduate because of his thing, saying in front, they filled the hallway with balloons.
I've, I've forgotten this until he died. John Harvey, the Easter about that yarmulke, he was one of the, the D hall, and did donuts.
Uh huh.
Got somebody to dare him to.
I recall something like that. We've had a lot of stuff on there back in those days.
Yeah, Matthew put balloons in the hallway.
Did he?
And they were gonna, they were not gonna let him graduate because they said if somebody popped the balloons, they would think it's gunshots and everybody in the school would be upset. So they made him go out there and take all the balloons out without popping them. It is seven o'clock.
All right.
Like to call, uh, the town council meeting out of recess, uh, for Wednesday, May fourteenth. So first thing, if everybody would please silence their cell phones. And then we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. We'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. If somebody is uncomfortable with either one, you can step outside the door, sit down. If you wish to step out, the chief will go get you after it's over with. Uh, and Chief Watts, let me, Chief Senior Watts.
Ex-chief.
Ex-chief Senior Watts will lead us in the invocation. So we'll all rise, please.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight and to conduct the people's business. And hopefully, we pray to you that they would conduct it in a way that honors the people and honors you, Lord. Lord, we ask you for, to guide us tonight, to help us to make the right decisions based upon your will, Lord. Lord, we ask for safe passage home for everybody here tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, the next item was, we had a resolution from Mr. Higginbotham for his many years of service to the town as, as the vice mayor, town council. Uh, and where the council wishes to recognize Mr. Higginbotham with a resolution for his, um, service. Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, also. So we had the resolution. We were hoping Mr. Higginbotham was gonna be able to get here tonight. We will talk to him if he can be here next month. We will hold on to it until then. If not, we will deliver it to him, uh, by next, through next week. The resolution, I will just, uh, it says, whereas Andra, uh, Higginbotham is a highly respected citizen and longtime resident of this town of Amherst. Whereas Mr. Higginbotham first served as a town council member of the town of Amherst from January fifteenth through December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. And then he was vice mayor from this, he was vice mayor at that time from two thousand, January two thousand seventeen through December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Uh, whereas he represented the town on the Public Safety and Community Relations Committee, Personnel Committee, and the Joint Committee on Cooperation. Whereas Mr. Higginbotham was appointed to town council to serve as a member of town council in November twenty twenty-one, after which he was elected in twenty twenty-two, to serve the remainder of the term, ending in twenty twenty-four. Mr. Higginbotham was re-elected in January of twenty-five, ending in twenty-eight. Finally, Mr. Higginbotham was appointed to serve as vice mayor from January one twenty-two to April thirtieth, twenty-five. Mr. Higginbotham has rendered loyal and dedicated service to the residents of town and surrounding area throughout his public service, uh, career in public service. Civic, uh, efforts, including his various positions of leadership, authority, and community involvement through his church. Whereas Mr. Higginbotham is a prominent businessman who has a keen interest in the promotion of the town of Amherst. Whereas the town of Amherst wishes to acknowledge the services that Mr. Higginbotham has given to his community and also express its appreciation for all that Mr. Higginbotham has done and is doing and will probably do for years to come for the town of Amherst. Now, therefore, be resolved that the town council of Amherst does, on this day, acknowledge the outstanding service that Mr. Higginbotham has given to his community. And be it further resolved that the town council of Amherst, of the town of Amherst, declares the town of Amherst has been greatly improved as a result of Mr. Higginbotham's tenure on town council in the town of Amherst. Finally, be it resolved that the clerk of the council of the town of Amherst is ordered to deliver an original copy of this resolution to Mr. Higginbotham as a token of the coun- uh, council's appreciation for his contribution to the community. And a resolution be spread upon the minute book of the town of Amherst. As a tribute to a good neighbor and a friend of the town of Amherst, signed by me on this day, as well as, uh, the clerk, Dicky Hunt. And also, when we give him that for his, before he became vice mayor, from, this was from his first stint on, uh, council, and this is from his second stint, so he gets, we'll present these to him when we present him with the resolution. So I will entertain a motion to accept this resolution from Mr. Fit Higginbotham, please.
Motion.
Have a motion. Can I have a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Wheaton. Is there any discussion? Or being done, uh, vote, Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Mr. Watts, Ms. Wheaton?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin. Motion is carried four zero zero. Next item is citizens' comments. We have Ms. Spicer for, uh, speaking for the vice president of Amherst Pool.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for your time, council. So I am here, I am the vice president of our Amherst Pool, otherwise known as the Amherst Recreation Center. And we are here to request help in our ability to serve the community with a reduction in our water rate. In the past, council has approved our nonprofit being charged the in-town water rates. We've made some improvements in the pool over the winter that will help us serve the community better, but they've put us in a cash flow dilemma until our membership increases. Please help us by adjusting our water rate to the in-town rate. We are a five oh one C nonprofit organization. And here are some points that we would like to know about us. We provide a reduced rate for all law enforcement officers and first responders and their membership dues. We provide free access to our pool in the months of April and May for the Amherst Fire Department's with water rescue team for their own training and use during the morning hours. The pool is located just a half mile from the town limits. Much of our membership is comprised of town mem- uh, town residents. We offer a relatively low-cost recreation facility that fills the need that a Y M C A would normally provide. We actually host a tremendous number of children during the morning hours for summer camps. We provide jobs for our local teenagers as lifeguards. Our local elders enjoy our pool for exercise and fitness. Our greatest expense is our one-time water fill at the beginning of the season after we have mucked out that pool and scrubbed it down and have to refill it by turning on the water faucet. Our only source of yearly revenue is our membership dues. For twenty twenty-five, we have invested in the removal and replacement of an entirely new six thousand seven hundred square feet concrete deck. A small group of dedicated volunteers worked to keep this sixty-two-year-old facility in operation to serve the community. The reduction in our water usage will help us tremendously fund our outreach program to gain members and remain in operation. We appreciate council's consideration on this request. We realize now that your budget starts for next year, July one. But we were hoping if you did approve this, that you would be gracious enough to start it sooner than that so our one-time large bill amount would be reduced as well. If you have any other questions, feel free to ask us. Um, last year, we had seventy-nine paid memberships. About thirty-four to thirty-five percent of that was, um, in-town residents. And currently, as most people don't pay their membership dues until opening day, which is May twenty-fourth, you're welcome to come out and see us. We're having a big celebration. We are currently up to forty-one paid members for this upcoming season, last I've checked.
Thank you, ma'am.
Two out there.
Thank you. Okay, next item, which is not on the agenda, is your amendment for the vice mayor to fill the, uh, term left by Mr. Higginbotham. I would like to appoint to that position, uh, Mr. Watts. So if there's no objection from council, we will proceed. Okay, Mr. Watts, welcome to your vice mayor position.
Chief, thanks.
You're welcome. Next is the, uh, consent agenda. I got, I'd say everybody here on council has had a chance to review, uh, last month's amendments. Uh, I will entertain a motion to approve those amendments.
Most.
Motion from Mr. Martin. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Driscoll. Any discussion, Mr. Driscoll?
No.
To Mr. Watts?
No.
No.
Ms. Wheaton and Mr. Martin. Vote, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Wheaton?
Aye.
Mr. Watts?
Aye.
And Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Motion carried four zero zero. Next item is a check approval from last month. I will entertain a motion to accept those as presented.
Motion.
Motion from Mr. Watts. May I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Driscoll. Any discussion, Mr. Driscoll?
No.
Mr. Watts?
No.
Ms. Wheaton? And Mr. Martin. Vote, Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Mr. Watts?
Aye.
Ms. Wheaton?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion carried four zero zero. Attached to all the staff reports, um, the police, uh, monthly report, the office managers, the clerk of council, and the public works are all attached. Other planning, other due reports, the planning commission met on May seventh, those minutes are attached. And the E D A met on April ninth and May fifth meeting, uh, those minutes are also attached. And we, I take it we did not get anything from robbery, leeches, or water?
That's correct.
Okay. Discussion items, the adoption of the twenty, of the F Y twenty-six budget, Ms. Morgan.
So we had a couple of work sessions on the F Y twenty-six budget and, um, the way it's presented in the packet is up for adoption. The only change I have is in my memo, which Mr. Driscoll has pointed out a couple of times that I've missed, is my memo states that we do have a real estate tax rate, but it's supposed to say we're one of the few towns that does not have a real estate tax rate. So I'm asking for adoption of that F Y twenty-six budget as part of the number packet.
You have a motion seconded, don't you?
Yeah, I need a motion, but I'm asking a question first.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and this is also where if council would like to honor the request of the Amherst Pool, this is the point at which we would ask that you, um, request an amendment to the, um, utility policy in the upcoming budget to return the F Y twenty-two language to that utility policy.
Yeah, because we have to ask that now before we take the thing to the budget, right?
So, yes, that would be adopted with your budget. So if you adopt the budget ordinance, is actually the motion that you would make with one change to the utility policy to, um, add that F Y twenty-two language? That will take care of that. And then if you would like to address prior to the July first timeframe, I would ask that be in a separate motion to address that and, and state what timeframe you would like to do.
And do that after the budget?
And do that after the budget, please.
So, Mr. Watts, I know this is.
Sure, pleasure.
Uh, the, uh, Amherst Pool is an asset to this community.
We're not discussing right yet. We're looking for a motion. Dude, you go ahead and do the motion.
All right, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we adopt the, uh, the budget as presented with one amendment, which would reinstate the language allowing five oh one C three organizations outside of town to, if they qualify, to, uh, be given in-town rates on the water.
From the twenty twenty-two language?
Yeah, from the twenty twenty-two language that was repealed.
Right.
Reinstate that.
And that's the totality of the budget ordinance that you're making a motion on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Driscoll. Discussion, Mr. Martin?
No.
Ms. Wheaton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Watts? We do a discussion now. And Mr. Driscoll?
Uh, the Amherst Pool is an asset to this community, uh, in ways that a lot of people don't even think of. Dono's Pizza, uh, thrives on, has a very good business with the Amherst Pool. It is, uh, the folks at the, the Amherst Pool, uh, the staff is all volunteers. And, uh, it is, it's a fantastic organization, uh, doing a real service to the community. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, just one other thing for council. This is also adoption of a budget is in the same thing. So I'm gonna go back and ask for any, if anybody has any questions, reference the adoption of the budget. It's all in one. Mr. Martin?
No.
Ms. Wheaton?
Yes, sir.
No.
Mr. Okay, now I will call for a vote, Mr. Driscoll. This is adopting the amendment as well as the, the budget.
Aye.
Mr. Ma- Mr. Watts? Ms. Wheaton?
No.
And Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion carried three one zero. Next item, Ms. McGuffin, the regional water supply.
One more thing.
What's that? Wait. You wanna do?
Okay, a second motion.
Okay, we're gonna do a second motion.
Yeah. So I want, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, make this rate increase retroactive back prior to, uh, July first.
What day you want it?
June first. No. May the. I'm January first. That's fine.
Would that work? This one? Okay. So he's asking that this, um, rate decrease for out-of-town five oh one C threes, if they petition, is effective, uh, January one of twenty.
And let's just make that this one for the pool, because we're not actually changing the utility rate policy. We're just, we're just allowing this for, um, the pools for starting to.
Yeah, they petition for it, so.
This is just for the pool.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is there any discussion on this? Okay, we'll ask for a vote. Mr. Martin? Ms. Wheaton?
No.
Mr. Watts?
Aye.
And Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Motion is carried three one zero. Thank you for catching that going, Mr. Watts.
Yes, sir.
Now, the regional water supply, Ms. McGuffin.
Yes, sir. Um, D E Q is responding to a change in the Virginia State Code, which requires localities to participate in a regional water supply plan. This has been something that has been done in the past. We did this, um, several years ago in conjunction with what was then known as Region Two Thousand. Um, in the past, you were allowed to pick your region. Um, this time around, D E Q has actually picked the regions. We are still pretty much, um, in the Region Two Thousand footprint. So the localities that we're tied with is Campbell, Lynchburg, Appomattox, and then Nelson, which Nelson did participate in our regional water supply plan last time. There are, um, some buckets of grant funding that are going to be available. I really just wanted to make you aware of this. The first grant funding is going to be put in. We're a member of the P D C, so we don't need a council action to participate in the grant. But I wanted to make you aware that, um, there will be a match to this. The, the match may be up to five thousand dollars on this first go-around. This is likely not going to be the only expense you're going to have for the regional water supply plan, but we don't have a choice. So this is one of those state mandates that we're going to participate in as, um, efficiently and inexpensively as possible. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that. I don't really feel like I need anything from council at this point. Um, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have questions and inform you of it so that, um, I could update you on it as time goes on.
Okay. Well, now, I'm just wondering, may I move on?
Yes, sir. It sure is.
It is. Okay. Uh, next item, set a public hearing for the F Y twenty-five budget amendment.
So the code of Virginia states that anytime you go over one percent of your budget, original budgeted expenditures, you have to set a hearing for a budget amendment. Um, we have already reached that one percent with the maintenance shop addition. That expense was approved in a previous fiscal year, but of course, it wasn't billed and we weren't billed for it until this one. So I'll be asking for a reappraisal and amendment of the current budget for that.
Okay, let's set it for next one. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing for this in the June council meeting.
So vote.
Motion from Mr. Driscoll. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second from Mr. Martin. Any discussion, Mr. Martin? Ms. Wheaton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Watts?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Driscoll? Mr. Driscoll, vote.
Aye.
Mr. Watts, Ms. Wheaton?
No.
And Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion carried three one zero. Next is, could it be, oh, it's you. I thought it was Kelly. Review the process for an appointment of an interim council member.
So the, the council member appointment process is really laid out in state code and there's several parameters that you, you need to meet as you go through the process. So the, the total time for the process is forty-five days. So council is supposed to appoint an interim within that forty-five day period. If council did not appoint an interim council member, then at that point, the circuit court would have the ability to do so. This person would only serve from the July meeting. Essentially, you would appoint in, at the June meeting. They would take, um, their oath of office. They would not be able to participate in the June meeting. They would take their oath of office and then become a council member. And they would serve until the special election in November and that vote was certified. So it, it's a really short time period, but I, you know, this, this is kind of how we do it. We, we go through that process. You, um, have currently an application process that is open. That, um, application window closes on May the twentieth. At that point, council will be given the applications. You currently have three applications for the position. All of those will be given to you after the window closes on May twentieth. And then we are asking you later in the meeting to set a special meeting for the end of the month, that may, on May twenty-ninth, for you to do two things. One, you need to actually announce the names of the people who have applied. And we will need to provide to the public any of their application materials. So we would put those up on the website for that meeting. You also have a closed session at that meeting for you to be able to interview the candidates. Then that meets the state code requirement to have seven days between the announcement of those candidates and the appointment, which you would do at the June meeting. All of this meeting, your, um, state obligated timeframes. So all of this is outlined in a memo in your packet and I'm happy to answer any questions for you about that.
Okay. The next one is Ms. Kimp. Hello, Ms. Kimp?
Yes, sir. How are you?
I am doing wonderful. How about you?
Uh, thank you. I'm requesting that council instruct me to file with the circuit court a petition and writ for the special election to be heard on the same day as the regular election, which is November fourth, twenty twenty-five this year. Um, I just am asking that you all basically tell me to do that so that we can get, um, get that special election on the ballot and work with the registrar to do that.
Okay, I will entertain a motion, um, for Ms. Wit- uh, Ms. Kimp to, um, contact the circuit court, reference a special election.
I'll make the motion.
Motion for Mr. Watts. May I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Driscoll. Any discussion, Mr. Martin? Ms. Wheaton? Mr. Watts?
No.
And?
Well, yeah, I do. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
I have a question from Ms. Kimp, uh, and I've had this question put to me. Considering you filed a writ of special election, when could a candidate expect to be able to file?
Excellent question. Ms. McGuffin has been kind enough to, um, take the petition and writ over tomorrow to the circuit court. I would expect that the judge could sign it within, you know, I would, I would assume he would sign it the next week or two. I don't know his schedule, obviously. That then has to be sent to the registrar, um, who I think Ms. McGuffin has spoken with. I don't know that Ms. McGuffin has that answer either, but, um, we can certainly find out.
So probably two, three, two, three weeks. I'm just asking. Somebody's asked me this question and, uh, I was trying to get a good idea and I didn't have a good answer for him. So, yeah, a couple of weeks, two, three weeks, it sounds fair, don't you?
At, at least, because, I mean, the judge does have to sign it and he may be, or she may be on vacation, it's big. I, I don't truly know. Um, but I would not expect that it would be more than a few weeks simply because, um, the registrar does have certain procedures they have to do to, you know, facilitate the ballots and things like that. So, but we can certainly find out.
Okay, thank you so much.
And Mr. Driscoll, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, vote, Mr. Driscoll?
Aye.
Mr. Watts?
Aye.
Ms. Wheaton?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion carried four zero zero. Next item, Ms. McGuffin has set the special meeting for the announcement and consideration of candidates for the interim town council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm asking council to set a meeting for May twenty-ninth at six P M for the purpose of this special called meeting to announce the candidates and then go into closed session for interviews.
I will entertain a motion that we set this meeting for May twenty-ninth at six P M.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Driscoll. Can I have a second?
Okay, I'll do it.
Second for Mr. Watts. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Driscoll, vote.
Aye.
Mr. Watts, Ms. Wheaton?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion carried four zero zero. Matters from staff, let's go, Chief Watts. Ms. Morgan?
Um, yes, so we plan on going per se live with the new utility meters this month, um, for your active readings. Please be patient with us. This is gonna be a learning process. And, uh, my deputy treasurer, Patty Martin, has worked her butt off the past month trying to compare, um, reports from the installation to reports from our system to make sure everybody has a new meter and that we're picking up service. And she's been calling people with leak alerts that we are already seeing. And she's been calling people with leak alerts that we are already seeing in our system. So she's been working real hard to try to get this straight. So please be patient, and we're going to see how this goes.
Have they all been installed, so far?
We have found a handful that were missed on Moss Ferry, and we have three larger meters for the elementary school down on sixty, and I believe of one for the courthouse, and there's one other one that's not installed. So three larger meters and a handful on Moss Ferry, for some reason, that were missed.
Our two, I mean, I, I, if they've switched us off, we weren't aware of it. And no disruption in water supply, no dirty water?
Well, it would have only been about fifteen minutes. And the, the water shouldn't have been affected at all. It should have just been a quick in and out.
Okay.
And that's it. But you should have a little, the antenna should be sticking up off of your top if they replaced yours, so it's a little black box that'll be setting up too, and that's the antenna.
You came from my box.
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Hunt? Mr. Williams?
No, sir.
Minutes, McGuffin. Okay. Okay, no, then, is there anybody here that, yes, sir, Mr. Sam?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Town Manager, Council Member, Sam Soger, Town Resident. Y'all, I wanted to speak about something from the last meeting. You know, I usually am not speaking in these meetings unless I'm praising a parade or thanking Reverend Higginbotham for his service. But you know, I come to these meetings monthly for years, right? Pretty exclusively, in a, in a sense. I was really moved by something in that meeting, and that is the town police dog, Sky, going away. And if there is any way that Sky could stay, I think it's worth it for the town. If it's a way to make it work with the money and the staffing, I just love that dog and Luther's relationship with that dog and the training and the time and resources that went into it. And it definitely seems like the type of thing where, well, maybe it's not useful today or tomorrow, but it's that kind of rainy day thing where I love the idea that the town police have that great dog, Sky. So it was just something that, it was like the type of thing I was thinking about overnight even. And then that impressed me, like, why did that, why did that item hit me after all these years of meetings, where I was like, I think I want to say something about that? So this is one town resident saying, if there's some way to keep Sky the police dog with the force, I'm for it. Thank y'all very much, peace and love.
Okay, matter from Council. Mr. Martin? And Ms. Wheaton?
I agree with Sam, the dog, the canine dog is an asset to our community. Not only does it do a search and rescue, it's also a narcotic dog. It's very unique that it's not a bite dog. If the, if the canine would save one child's life, it's worth every expense. You're putting money into new guns, which I don't believe we need. You're putting, you're giving a break in price to the town pool, which I don't believe is fair to the community, especially if we have to raise our water bills, and we're already looking at problems of getting water. I think this is a huge mistake of Council if you eliminate the canine program, and shame on us if we do. Thank you.
Mr. Watts?
No.
And Mr. Driscoll?
No.
I don't have anything either. Uh, so what I will do is I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, or second.
Ms. Wheaton, okay, Ms. Wheaton, second, and Mr. Driscoll, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried four zero zero.
Thank you.